Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capitol District has called this public hearing to order. It is now 6:00 PM on Monday, June 22, 2015. Present with us this evening is, to my right, far-right Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. To my immediate right is Senator Frank Uggan. To my left is Senator Anthony Ada. And to his left is Senator Frank Blas. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to receive testimony on Bill Number 102-33. It's an act to amend 22 GCA Sections 5201 and 5202, and to amend 5 GCA Section 4101A relative to discrimination in the workplace, and to citing this act as the Guam Employment Nondiscrimination Act, or Agenda of 2015 introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. And to hear Bill Number 104-33, it's an act to repeal 19 GCA Chapter 22, to repeal 5 GCA Section 3120, and add a new Article III to 22 GCA Division 1, Chapter 1, Department of Labor, introduced by Senator Frank F. Blas Jr. and Senator James V.S. Valdon. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on June 15, 2015, meeting the five-day notice, and a 48-hour notice was provided on June 18, 2015, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM on Monday, June 29, 2015. Please address the testimony to Majority Leader Rory J. Rispicio, Chairperson, Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capitol District, and may be hand-delivered or mailed to 155 Hessler Place, Agon, near Guam, or emailed to corguam@guamlegislature.org. We'll now start the public hearing. But before we do that, we have nine people. We're going to start with Bill Number 102. And there have been nine people that have signed up. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to break it up into two panels. And the first panel will consist of Ms. Jackie Marotti, Ms. Therese Obispo, Ms. Jacqueline Marum. Okay, so Ms. Therese Obispo and Ms. Jackie Marotti. Okay, do we have a Jacqueline from the Guam Women's Chamber? Oh, that was you, okay, looked like. Mr. Martin Manglona, did you want to give oral testimony on Bill 102? Okay, please. And Mr. James Moore. I was just setting up the panel. Okay, so before we open up the panel for your testimonies, I'm going to go ahead and give the sponsor of the bill an opportunity to briefly explain what Bill 102-33 is.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for conducting this hearing this evening. The two of us had a conversation just before 5:00 this evening, and you were asking why certain provisions were in this bill. And I wanted to make sure that people understand that though we on Guam believe that we are the center of the universe, and that everything that exists in the world is actually what we have experienced on Guam, and that Reverend Moore and I can rise to the top in his church, and I can get to the top of the judiciary, that that's not the case everywhere else. And the chairman asked me a very interesting question, and before Mr. Manglona speaks, I just wanted to make it clear on one other part, on the military, the inclusion of military. And then I'll go into my statement. The chairman was concerned, he was trying to figure out why I would include military reservists. And I said, "It's a very current and real problem. Maybe not on Guam, but it's real." I'll read a news story from San Diego dated May 12, 2015, last month. More than a dozen federal agents with DEA Drug Enforcement Agency have filed an employment complaint in Washington, D.C. alleging discrimination and harassment by DEA management. Two of the 16 agents agreed to speak out on CBS News in their first television interview. Quote, "They, DEA, have been consistent and perpetual harassment that continues to escalate," says DEA Special Agent Mark Coast of San Diego. Quote, "Servicemen should not be treated as second-class citizens." Coast says he has been constantly harassed by DEA managers because he also serves his country as a U.S. Marine Colonel Reservist. He says DEA managers don't like military reservists taking time off in DEA to deploy overseas. Quote, "You sit at your desk, and your supervisors will constantly come by and tell you, quote, 'You need to get out of the service. You can't serve two masters,'" end of quote, said Coast, a member of the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve since 1987. And Coast is not alone. On Saturday, a total of 16 DEA special agents from all over the country signed on to the employment complaint filed in the U.S. Merit Protection Board in Washington, D.C. The complaint claims DEA supervisors routinely subject military reservists to, quote, "hostile and offensive comments in the workplace", and that DEA managers discriminate against agents who serve in the military by, quote, "denying reservists promotions and assignments." Most of the agents named in the complaint have worked at the DEA office in San Diego, and more are expected to come forward. Quote, "It is okay to assert your rights. It's okay to come forward," said Derek Kalinsky, a supervisory DEA special agent working in Washington, D.C. Kalinsky said that he was denied a transfer to work in the same city as his wife. He said DEA managers did not want to give him the job because they knew he might be called up to active duty as a U.S. Coast Guard reservist. Quote, "Upon hearing of my being a reservist, the tone of the meeting quickly changed, and the next day, my transfer was denied," end of quote, Kalinsky said. In the complaint, the DEA agents are seeking back pay, retroactive promotions, monetary damages, and mandatory employment discrimination training for all DEA managers. Washington, D.C. Attorney Kevin Brynes represents the agents named in the employment complaint. One of my agents was in Kandahar Province, and he got an email from his supervisor at DEA saying, quote, "I hope you're enjoying the sunny weather," end of quote. He was under mortar attack of the types of burns. The complaint seeks class-action status for DEA reservists who have suffered damages. The reserve, quote, from the complaint, "The reservists contend that they themselves have suffered concrete acts of discrimination, retaliation, reprisal, and hostile work environment by DEA supervisors and senior management, up to and including the DEA Administrator, Deputy Administrator of Career Board." Further, they suspected since September 1, 2001, the DEA has hired and retained far fewer drilling reservists as part of a pattern and practice of dissuading agents from remaining in the armed forces. The reservists seek to have designated as a class all current and former drill reservists who have worked for the DEA from 1990 to the present and continue throughout the course of this suit. They want to be recognized for the commitment they have, and they went to the agency's management personnel who are engaging in discrimination to be held accountable for that discrimination, said Attorney Burns. Managers of the DEA office in San Diego declined comment. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands this is real. This was last month, just before I introduced this legislation, which was the reason why I introduced this piece of legislation, including the military. A woman also came to me and talked to me about the fact that she had been fired because she notified her employer that she was pregnant. And I was going to include the pregnancy also in this legislation, but I found some federal legislation that addresses that. But I just wanted people to, because I know that some military people were offended that I included them in the agenda, and I wanted to include everybody in trying to address this issue. The U.S. Congress, since 1994, 21 years ago, introduced the Employment Nondiscrimination Act. It's been introduced in every Congress since 1994, except for the 109th, this current one. It has passed one House in every Congress, but has failed to pass the second. So for 21 years, it's been lingering in the Congress. And so I decided that I was going to take this on and try to pass a Guam Employment Nondiscrimination Act because it seemed the federal government was not willing to go forward with it. And I felt it really needed to be addressed. There are 29 states in this country, and Guam, which makes it 30, where you can still be fired because of your sexual orientation. And many of us believe that, you know, because I was named a judge 30 years ago, that there is no employment discrimination here on Guam. I did not realize that many of my brothers and sisters in the community have suffered employment discrimination as a result of their orientation. And I, believing that since I didn't suffer it, nobody else did, I never felt the need to introduce this. But over the last six years, in trying to push through some other pieces of legislation and not getting the community to come forward to speak, I came to realize that not everybody is as fortunate as I and some other members of this community who are self-sufficient enough or have a career, that they don't need to have bosses that are concerned about their orientation. And as a consequence, many people don't want to come forward. And in anticipation of a ruling from the U.S. Supreme Court next week, which I'm hoping, and the district court ruling that came out at the beginning of this month, I wanted to make sure that in expressing their love for each other and getting married at 10:00 in the morning, that the person didn't go back to work and get fired at 2:00 in the afternoon, because that could still happen. The district court has said that the Ninth Circuit has held that it's a right, I mean, it's discriminatory to have the provisions in the law as it relates to the marriage license, but it still has not addressed the issue of employment discrimination. And many of us believe that it had. And many of us grew up thinking that the Civil Rights Act took care of all of that. But many people don't understand that the Mattashine Society, which was the precursor to Gaila in the early '60s, wrote to Vice President Hubert Humphrey soon after the Civil Rights Act of 1964 was passed, and was asking Hubert Humphrey, who many of us, from the '60s, believed was the patron saint of all liberal causes, that he was more liberal than LBJ. And so Mr. Kamene wrote, from the Mattashine Society, wrote to the White House, asking about the effect Civil Rights Act would have on homosexuals. And on the letterhead of the Office of the Vice President, this is his response. Dear Mr. Kamene, thank you for sending me the formal statement of purpose of your organization. As coordinator of the federal civil rights activities, it is indeed my responsibility and intention to seek the full implementation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, including its prohibition against discrimination in employment because of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. Neither the federal executive orders on fair employment, nor the Civil Rights Act, which constitute the authority for this program of nondiscrimination, are relevant to the problem of homosexuals. Sign our liberal hero, the Triple H. Many people don't realize that. Many people don't realize that in 1953, there was an executive order signed by President Eisenhower soon after he came in, actually, within months. And it wrote, "Perverts call government peril." This is Executive Order 10450. Guy George Gabrielson, Republican National Committee Chairman, asserted today that, quote, "Sexual perverts who have infiltrated our government in recent years were perhaps as dangerous as the actual communists." And this executive order, signed by President Eisenhower in 1953, remained in effect until July 21, 2014, when President Obama repealed the previous executive order and ordered federal contractors and the federal government to employ, I mean, to no longer discriminate on sexual orientation. Fifty, almost 60 years that that executive order remained in effect. And it wasn't until July 21, 2014, our own liberation day, that that order was repealed. And President Obama was constantly criticized since he took office because of the fact that he had not addressed it. And though, when he was a senator, he had been for Enda, he was not willing to assign an executive order to that effect. And just last week, the Department of Defense, Secretary of the Department of Defense Ashton Carter, just signed new orders for the military requiring that there no longer be any kind of discrimination on sexual orientation. Last week, the 19th of June, 2015. We thought that "Don't ask, don't tell," and all those other things had taken care of it. It had not. Until last week, you could still get tossed out of the military because of it. And so these are all current issues. You know, a lot of people kept thinking that, "Where did you come, where did this come from, B.J.?" And the Department of Defense just addressed it last week. The President of the United States just addressed it in the executive order last year. There is that article that I told you about the DEA. And there are, I don't have enough time, I don't want to testify this entire afternoon, but there's a whole series of lawsuits throughout the country of police departments, that there's suits against them because reservists and National Guardsmen are being discriminated against because of their military status. And I hate to admit this, but locally, after our guys came back from Afghanistan, the 600, and I thought that we could get them employed in government, and I kept pushing one of the captains up at the National Guard to get them into either one of the government agencies in public safety. I won't say who it was, but one person responsible for employment response was, "I don't think we can hire them. They may have PTSD." So it's real, and it's on Guam. And I'm hoping that this committee understands that this is real, it's current, it has to be addressed. Though we may think it doesn't exist because we may not be suffering it, or I haven't suffered it in the last 40 years since I got out of law school, but it's real. And I know, unfortunately, that too many of my brothers and sisters are suffering it, and too many of our men and women whose efforts to assure my right to be able to have my orientation and these jobs and the freedoms that we enjoy are being discriminated against. That cannot continue to happen. And I'm hoping that with the support of this committee and the support of the community, Ganda will become the law of Guam, and we will no longer be one of the 30 jurisdictions in the United States where discrimination on orientation continues to persist. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. We're going to go ahead and open up the panel, then. We'll start with Ms. Jackie Marotti, and then be followed by Ms. Obispo, and then Mr. Manglona, and then Reverend Moore.
Buenas en Hafaday, Honorable Chairman and Senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature. I am Jackie Areola Marotti, Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce Board Member and Chair of the GWCC Legislative and Public Relations Committee. I appear before you today to submit testimony in favor of Bill 102-33 relative to discrimination in the workplace and to citing this act as the Guam Employment Nondiscrimination Act Agenda of 2015. Briefly, the bill includes, in quotes, "gender identity or expression," close quotes, and, quote, "honorably discharged veteran and military status, sexual orientation or ancestry," close quotes, as covered classifications against which employment discrimination is specifically prohibited. The Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce supports this bill as law as our organization identifies initiatives and advocates for equality and fairness in all facets of issues facing women, and by extension, our families. In particular, workplace parity allows women and our families to be treated equally and also protected under local statutes. Bill 102-33 recognizes the changes in the family and workplace and updates Guam's laws to optimize inclusiveness in our community. We applaud the author and supporters of the bill for their purposefulness in introducing this initiative. Thank you, Inzituas Maasi.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marotti, Ms. Obispo.
Hafaday, Honorable Chairman and Senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature. I am Teresa Cruz Obispo, Bank of Guam Senior Vice President of Human Resources. I appear before you today to submit testimony in favor of Bill 102-33 relative to discrimination in the workplace and to citing this act as the Guam Employment Nondiscrimination Act Agenda of 2015. Briefly, the bill adds gender identity or expression, and honorably discharged veteran and military status, and sexual orientation, as covered classifications against which employment discrimination is specifically prohibited. The Bank of Guam, the People's Bank, supports this bill as law as our organization is an equal opportunity employer and fully supports a nondiscriminatory working environment. We believe equality under the law is inclusive of all people, regardless of their gender identity or expression, their military status, or their sexual orientation. This is evident throughout our employment policy and practices in all the areas that we serve. Bill 102-33 recognizes the need for equality for all our people, and we applaud the author and supporters of the bill for their efforts in introducing this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Obispo. Mr. Manglona?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Ada, and distinguished senators. Before I start my testimony, I'd like to echo what Senator B.J. Cruz was talking about. I represent, I'm the Administrator for Veterans Affairs in Guam, and I have the same incident in Saipan. I was the specialist for the governor. In 1990, EcoCupin was deployed to Kuwait, and 80% of those deployed are from police departments. They start hiring local people to replace those police officers. So I called the director at that time, Mr. Camacho. I said, "You have to follow the College Soldier-Sailors Act. That protects those members that work in the community that they have their jobs secured when they get back." To me, I think it's a matter of education because they're not aware of federal law of the Soldier-Sailors Act. Right now, we have a good executive director, David Sablon. He worked with ESGR and people that are deployed on the National Guard. They have an orientation with the employer. So they have their jobs secured when they got deployed, either Afghanistan or Iraq. So I think it's a matter of education because any employer would like to have an employee working 24 hours, but they have to follow federal law. Now, going back to my testimony, I am in support of Bill 102-33. It enforces from the federal laws prohibiting discrimination, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits employment discrimination based on color, religion, sex, race, and national origin. The Equal Pay Act of 1963, which protects men and women who perform substantially equal work in the same establishment. The Age Discrimination Act of 1967, which protects the individual that are 40 years and over. The Title I and Title V of the American Disability Act of 1990, which prohibit employment discrimination against people that have disabilities in the private sector, state, or local government. Section 501 and Section 545, which work in the federal government. The Civil Rights Act of 1991 provides monetary damages in case of intentional employment discrimination. I'm full support of this act, and I think it's about time that we're going to have this law in effect. I thank you for yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manglona.
Mr. Chairman, senators, and members of the public in attendance today, I am the Reverend James Moore serving St. John's Episcopal Church in Upper Tuman. I come here to testify today in support of Bill 102-33 relative to discrimination in the workplace. I must honestly say that in the 21st century, we should have come to a point of respect of one another's differences, that such laws and statutes are unnecessary. However, we all know the reality of the world we live in. And as news reaches us of harm brought by hate, racism, and total intolerance of certain groups and individuals toward other groups, it shocks us into realizing the necessity of putting down on paper what should have already been in the hearts and citizens of our island. I lived in Guam for almost 50 years and consider myself to be Guamanian. During the period of time, I've seen many changes take place on our island. Some may say for the better, others talk about the good old days. And I too remember when we would get together on weekends for barbecues and then fall asleep under the mango tree in Malolo. Fond memories, yes. But one thing that has not changed is the friendliness and respect that we have for each other as a people. Where else in the United States do we find so many mixed-race marriages? My own grandchildren are Tramoral Japanese, Filipino, and Caucasian, all mixed up together to be the most beautiful kids around. Just recently, we received a ruling from the courts, and marriage equality has come to Guam. Many people think that the fight for LGBT rights is now over, and we can move on. However, as Vice Speaker Cruz points out in introducing this bill, there are still challenges that must be faced. And these challenges are not only for the LGBT people, but include a litany of groups that should not face difficulties when seeking employment just because of who they are. This bill seeks relief from discrimination in employment for all of our citizens, giving each individual a chance to compete in the public and private sectors. I serve a church that has the motto, "In this church, there'll be no outcasts." As a spiritual person, as a citizen of Guam, as a human being, I cannot believe that discrimination in any form benefits us as a community. I therefore support Bill 102-33, realizing that laws may not fully solve discrimination in any community, but are a step in bringing equality to all those who call this island of Guam our home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Moore. Do any of the senators have questions of the panel? None. Thank you very much. I'm going to call up the second panel now. I'm going to call up the second panel. I’m going to call up the second panel, Lacya Casil, Mona Connolly, or Maria Connolly, Alan Wang, and Joanne from SHRM. So we’ll start with Ms. Casil. I’m going to go ahead and call up Bill Peshi, and — well, we’ll wait until the third group. I’m sorry. Go ahead, please. Please turn on your mic, and there you go.
Hafaday Chairman and Senators, my name is Lacya Casil. I’m a Tramoral woman from the South. My deceased grandmothers are Anna Dolores Titano Grayusida from Sumai, and Rosana Kichichu Casil from Agad. My family’s been on this island for a very long time. I recently moved back to Guam last December after a twenty-one-year absence. I’m here today to share with you why I’ve stayed away from my home for so long. In 1993, excuse me, I was hired by a — excuse me. A new hotel on Tumon Beach that was just about to open to work as a waitress at the restaurant. Along with the other hires, I went through several weeks of training. I didn’t think I would be this emotional. I’m sorry. I went through several weeks of training in anticipation of the grand opening of the hotel. On opening day, just a few hours before that, we were to open the doors to the public, I was pulled aside from the other employees and told to go to the HR office. I was sat down and told that I was being terminated because I had lied on my job application. I was accused of lying about my gender identification. I had checked F on my job application as female, as that is what I identified then, as I do now, twenty-one years later. The HR manager apologized and told me there was nothing she could do about it. She then called me to her side and whispered in my ear that I should fight this, and I should go to the Department of Labor to file a complaint. I did this, however. When I got there, I was told there was nothing that they could do about it. There are no laws on Guam protecting an employee from being terminated from a job based on their sexual identification. All I wanted to do was work, pay my rent, pay for college, put food on the table, and be a contributing member to the Tramoral community. But I was terminated, not because I broke any laws, but just for existing. After this humiliating experience, I found it difficult to find another job. Would I be put through the same humiliation of being hired, being trained, and then being fired for being myself again and again and again? Add to this the discrimination and the bullying encountered on a daily basis from the community, the church, my family, and I just couldn’t take it anymore. So I left Guam. I packed everything I had in a couple of suitcases. There were three hundred dollars in my pocket. I promised myself that I would never return to home unless I could sustain myself independently. I would come back home only if I had my own business and I was my own boss, so that I would never have to be called into an HR office again and be humiliated or discriminated against. For the past twenty-one years, I lived in fear of coming home. I missed my family, watching my nieces and nephews grow up. I missed my island and my culture. In 2013, I logged onto my Facebook and read a post by the PDN. It was front-page news. The hotel that had hired me, trained me, and then fired me for being transgender was celebrating its twentieth anniversary on Guam. I can’t describe to you how painful it was to relive all the humiliation, the anger, the discrimination, the bigotry, and fear that I had experienced for the past twenty years. It wasn’t fair that I was run off my island, and I had to read about my previous employer celebrating twenty years on Guam. It was then that I realized I needed to fight this, I needed to take a stand. Running and trying to secretly blend into society is not the solution for me or the I can’t describe to you the fear right now I’m feeling, as I’m basically outing myself on television. But I don’t know, but I do know that if I don’t speak out about this now, it will happen again and again and again. Today, I’m my own boss. I have a jewelry line sold at T-Galleria. No one can fire me. But many people in the LGBT community are not so lucky. Let me tell you what not having equal rights means. It means having to go to work every day in fear. It means having to look over your shoulder all the time. It means not being able to concentrate fully on your work. And when one is terminated from their job, and there are no means for them to provide the basic necessities for themselves, food, shelter, or health care, many times in the LGBT community, it means having to turn to alternative and illegal ways to survive. In the trans community, this means the sex trade. I know because twenty-one years ago, I was out on those streets, because no one would hire me. Last week, we celebrated a historic moment on Guam, something I never thought would happen in my lifetime, marriage equality. Bravo. What we’re asking for today is not to be treated better than anyone. We’re not asking for extra privileges. We’re asking for equality. Employees in the U.S. are protected from being terminated based upon their sex, religion, or race. We’re asking not to be discriminated against based upon traits that we are born with, sexual preference, or gender identity. Let’s take a step in the right direction for equality in Guam. We set an amazing example for the world on equal human rights last week. We can do it again. It’s past time. Nsituas Massey, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Casil. Ms. Connolly?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Senators. Thank you for this opportunity. I submitted a written letter supporting this bill, and in addition to that, I also submitted the latest guidance, and very similar to the federal government, but this latest guidance that we received from the U.S. Department of Labor, Employment and Training Administration, and the subject is “Update on Complying with Nondiscrimination Requirements. Discrimination Based on Gender Identity, Gender Expression, and Sex Stereotyping Are Prohibited: Forms of Sex Discrimination in the Workforce Development System.” So in addition to supporting, we also made our own comments, specifically on different lines of the bill itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Connolly. Mr. Alan Wang?
Honorable Chairman and Senators and the public.
Please speak into the mic so that people can —
My name’s Alan Wang from Department of Labor. I am supporting the Bill 102-33. I only have one small suggestion to — on page two, line three, line eight, line seventeen, line twenty-four, I propose to add national origin after our ancestry on line three. So it’s on line eight, after ancestry, add national origin. On line seventeen, add national origin after our ancestry. On line twenty-four, also add national origin after ancestry. That’s all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wang.
Good evening, Senators. Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Uggins, Senator Ada, Senator Ada, and Senator Blas. My name is Joanne Waki Munia, and I am the Society of Human Resource Management Pacific Council State Director for Guam and NMI. I am also a past president for the Society of Human Resource Management Guam Chapter. The Society of Human Resource Management was founded in 1948. The Society of Human Resource Management is the world’s largest human resource membership organization devoted to human resource management, representing more than 275,000 members in over 160 countries. SHRM is the leading provider of resources to serve the needs of HR professionals and advance the professional practice of human resource management. SHRM has more than 575 affiliated chapters within the United States, and I’m proud to say Guam and NMI are one of them. I am here today on behalf of the Society of Human Resource Management to support Bill 102-33. And let me give you some background. Again, I am here to support the national organization and the local organization. I cannot overemphasize how large we are, over 160 countries inclusive of the United States. Background for the United States. Federal law protects employees from discrimination in the workplace on the basis of race, national origin, sex, religion, disability, pregnancy, and age, but it does not on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity. At the end of 2014, however, the Office of the Federal Contractor Compliance, OFCCP, issued a ruling implementing an executive order prohibiting federal contractors from discriminating on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity. In addition, Supreme Court has ruled that federal bans on workplace sexual harassment apply when both parties are of the same gender. So basically, in summary, although there is no federal law that prohibits, there are case laws that found it discriminatory. And it’s interesting that it is the federal case laws that found it discriminatory. Case in point, the Macy case, Dr. Aminaz. Vice Speaker spoke a little bit about law enforcement. It was a case that was against the Alcohol and Tobacco Bureau, the federal agency. Issue at hand for SHRM? In recent years, many employers have adopted practices barring the consideration of sexual orientation or gender identity in employment decisions. According to the Human Rights Campaign, ninety-one percent of Fortune 500 companies have adopted policies prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, and sixty-one percent on the basis of gender identity. Twenty-one states and the District of Columbia have passed laws prohibiting employment discrimination based on sexual orientation, and eighteen states and D.C. also prohibit discrimination based on gender identity. As proposed, the Employment Nondiscrimination Act, also known as EGDA, would prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. While the Employment Nondiscrimination Act has garnered bipartisan support in recent congresses, including Senate passage in the 113th Congress, the House has failed to act on the legislation. The outlook for SHRM and the outlook for us. The Employment Nondiscrimination Act will be introduced in the 114th Congress. This is what we believe it should will happen. But it is unclear whether it would advance in the Republican-controlled Congress. Given the President’s recent executive order extending protection to employees on federal contractors, there may be renewed congressional interest in extending these protections to all workplaces. Sexual orientation nondiscrimination, SHRM’s 2013 Guide to Public Policy Issues, twenty-one SHRM positions, one of them is on gender identity. SHRM believes that the employment decisions should be made on the basis of qualifications for a job and not on the non-job-related characteristics, including sexual orientation and gender identity. SHRM supports public policy efforts to ban workplace discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. SHRM believes that any legislation should be narrowly drafted to avoid unattended consequences for the employers and the employees. SHRM also supports the voluntary rights of employers to offer domestic partner benefits to all their employees. In summary, SHRM, the largest professional organization in the United States and in 160 countries inclusive of Guam and NMI. We are committed to encourage fair and consistent employment practice, and believe that employment decisions should be made on the basis of job qualifications, education, experience, and demonstrated competency, not, and I repeat, not, on non-job-related characteristics, including sexual orientation, gender identity. SHRM supports the efforts to ban workplace discrimination based on sexual orientation. SHRM does support Bill 102-33. Vice Speaker, I apologize, I did not put a position on the military benefits, and it’s simply because right now I am representing SHRM as a whole, and the gender identity is one of our very, very big priorities, and I wanted that to be the focus. But SHRM does support our veterans. As Mr. Maloney has mentioned, there’s lots of legislations out there on Guam. We do work closely with the ESGR and with the Lieutenant Colonel Chris Ostimo, and I think we’ve been successful. So I think having it in your bill for discrimination, it doesn’t hurt what’s currently out there, maybe it just reemphasizes it, but in terms of gender identity, I think this is the biggest piece of legislation that we’ve had come before our community, and again, SHRM as a whole will continue to fight at the congressional level. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you very much, Ms. Munia. Senators, does anybody have questions of these panels? Okay. Thank you very much. I’d like to call Bill Pesh. General Young Guero, were you going to give testimony?
Yes, sir.
I didn’t have —
I showed up late, sir.
Oh, no problem. Please. We’ll add you on.
Thank you.
Mr. Pesh?
Thank you very much. I submitted a letter to —
Senator Cruz?
I submitted a letter to Senator Cruz, and I’d like to read from it if I may. Dear Senator Cruz, thank you for the opportunity to present input on Bill 102-33, the Guam Employment Nondiscrimination Act of 2015. I appreciate this opportunity to present my views on the matter. These are exciting times for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, the LGBT community, both here on Guam and throughout the United States. Both public opinion and official response to our aspirations to be treated as equals to our heterosexual counterparts are finally turning in our favor. Today, thirty-seven states, the District of Columbia, and Guam authorize same-sex marriages. We remain hopeful that the U.S. Supreme Court will soon rule in the Obergefell versus Hodges case that all states and territories must allow same-sex couples to marry. Ten years ago, such a hope would have been a pipe dream. Soon, it may become a reality. However, even if the Supreme Court holds that all states must allow same-sex marriages, the LGBT community’s fight for equality is far from over. Although a gay couple may be able to marry today, tomorrow, they might be fired solely because of their sexual orientation. A study conducted by Lee Badgett, a labor economist at the University of Amherst, found that between one-quarter to two-thirds of lesbian, gay, and bisexual persons have lost their jobs or been denied promotions simply because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. This must stop. In my practice, I have been approached by several members of the Guam LGBT community complaining of unfair labor practices aimed against them because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Just recently, a transgender person told me that her employer insisted she wear a name tag with her male birth name on it rather than the female tag she prefers and identifies with. She was in fear of imminent termination if she refused to comply with the employer’s directive. Hers is not an isolated case. Fortunately, throughout the nation, the LGBT community is making great progress in combating workplace discrimination. In the early 1990s, only two states had specific laws prohibiting sexual orientation or gender identification discrimination. Today, twenty-two states and the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, and over 140 cities and counties ban discrimination based on sexual orientation and/or gender identity. ban discrimination based on sexual orientation and/or gender identity. Thanks to the Fortune 500 Non-Discrimination Project, great progress has also been made in the private sector. Nearly 97 percent of the Fortune 500 companies have specific provisions in their workplace policies banning discrimination based on sexual orientation. In 2004, when the project began, only 64.4 percent of the companies afforded employees such protections. The military has also recently taken steps to protect its LGBT soldiers. On June 11, 2015, Defense Secretary Ash Carter announced that sexual orientation would be added to the military's list of non-discrimination protections under the military's Equal Protection or Equal Opportunity Program. The list also includes race, creed, color, national origin, and gender. None of these factors may be used to discriminate against a recruit or military member in the processes of recruitment, hiring, firing, and promotions. Although the change does not include transgender individuals, military hierarchy seems to be reconsidering its position on this matter as well. With the help of the Guam Legislature, we hope that Guam will soon be added to the growing list of entities that protect both public and private employees from discriminatory behavior aimed at the LGBT community. I certainly believe that Bill 102-333 will address many of our concerns, and I endorse its passage. I'd like to stray from my prepared text just for a minute and just say, the reason I'm probably sitting here today is because of discrimination against the LGBT community. When I graduated from college in 1976, there were two careers I was particularly interested in. One was military, and the other was working for the FBI. Neither of those were realistic possibilities for me. Although my father had a very long 36-year and distinguished career with the military, my brother was also a member of the military, I knew because of my sexual orientation, I would not be allowed to join the military. FBI was my next choice. You have to go through a lie detector test at that time in order to become a member of the FBI, and one of the first questions they ask you is if you were gay, and I wasn't going to lie. And so, early on in my career, when I was looking at the two things I wanted to do most, those doors were shut to me. And today, I'm willing to stand before, sit before, the community and advocate in behalf of the LGBT community because I don't want any young person to have to put up with, excuse my language, the crap that I had to put up with and the crap that a lot of us have had to put up with in this room, because, solely because of our sexual identity or sexual orientation. It isn't fair. You can put it under the color of any religion that you want, but it isn't fair, it isn't right, and none of you should support discrimination based on it. And for that reason, I asked you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pesh. General Young Guero?
Good evening, Chairman Ada, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Frank Blas. I'm here to testify in support of 102-333, and specifically because it addressed needs of the vets, and so, thank you, Senator Vice Speaker, for your comments earlier. I did have some technical questions about the bill that I wanted to ask. On page five, I noticed the veteran and military statuses. There's listed all reserve components from 22 to 27 on page five, on lines 22 to 27. Is it the intent to ensure that you don't have any active component?
Thank you for pointing that out. No, I didn't want to. That was not the intention to leave out active, so...
Okay.
And it was taken care of last week with DOD, but I'll make sure that we address that. Thank you.
Okay. The other question I had was, on page six, line nine through 11, it talks about honorably discharged veterans and military statuses, sexual orientation, race, color, age. I'm sorry, line seven, no person shall be discriminated against in the application for employment, or promotion, or dismissed from employment. And what I suggest, before I took this job as the action general, I'm a personnelist by trade, and so, I anticipate someone may be discriminated on evaluations. I don't know, does Guam do evaluations? And so, they could write that in their evaluations or be reprimanded. So, I don't know if that's necessary to put that in there, that they don't be reprimanded for, let's say, a person of transgender, it's a male dressing as a female, and supervisor writes that individual up for not dressing like a male. So, you may want to put reprimands in evaluations in that clause. And that's not I have to offer, subject to your questions.
Thank you very much, General Young Guero. Gentlemen, does anybody have any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you for coming today, and I just wanted to thank you for coming today and testifying, and also, I was at your, what did they call it, your induction or...
Penning ceremony?
Yeah, the penning ceremony.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me for not knowing the... And I was very proud of your speech that you gave about insisting that your National Guard was going to be one that encouraged diversity. And I don't know if I've had a chance to thank you, but I wanted to publicly say I really appreciate the fact that you included that and mentioned it several times through the speech. I wanted to get up and cheer, but...
Thank you, Vice Speaker. In fact, my motto is all about diversity, and so, I emphasize about sexual preference, and I have my philosophy, and it's focused on hatred around the world and how discrimination turns to hate, turns to anger and hate, and it turns to violence. And so, this is one of the reasons why, in my mind, if we nip it at the butt, getting along and working with each other, we won't be in this kind of situation where we're trying to fight each other. And the big thing was ISIS and religious discrimination, they hate you because you don't believe the same as they do, and so, diversity is very important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, General. Thank you very much. This concludes the hearing on Bill 102. The next bill that we would hear now is Bill 104-333, introduced by Senator Frank F. Blas. Senator, please explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the 104-333 very simply provides the mechanism and to bring two entities that I firmly believe have similar and very congruent responsibilities, bringing them together, and without losing any of the responsibilities and the mandates they have, folding them in into one entity, and that is by taking the Agency for Human Resource Development and putting it under the umbrella of the Department of Labor, and in that is establishing a division that continues to provide those services. And, Mr. Chairman, as we move forward with many of the plans that we have to develop, you know, for economic development and human resource development and so on, and the need for the continued education of individuals for jobs and being able to provide them, you know, adequate and jobs that everybody can be proud of, I felt that it was, this was a necessary step, and that it's not to take away from, and it's not to say that one agency wasn't doing the job, their job, over another agency. This is saying that both agencies put together would provide a better product, you know, for the people and for the community that it serves. So, I appreciate very much, you know, working with many individuals in the community, more especially many individuals who work in these agencies. I'm not going to proclaim to be the expert in this. I think it was an idea that we, that I thought about, and, you know, bringing it to those who are, for lack of a better term, subject matter experts, and asking how this can be able to work, and getting their help in being able to draft the legislation, what we have before us. Now, for consideration, is that piece of legislation that would provide what I would believe a stronger Department of Labor? So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. I'd like to call up the panel. Mrs. Connolly, Ms. Michelle Titanow. Well, let's see. Michelle Titanow, you indicated just the written testimony. Ms. Munia, just, you're going to give oral testimony to? Okay. Ms. Titanow, did you want to, is she here? Okay. And I have Jessie Kinata. Wait. Just, okay, fine. Great. Thank you. So, we'll start with you, Mrs. Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senators, good evening. I submitted a written testimony supporting Bill 104-333 because I too firmly believe that a more cohesive and focused effect may be gained by manpower and employment programs being administered under one department, the Guam Department of Labor. And I do want to read just one paragraph of my letter, out of my letter. Establishing a division of workforce development and training within the Department of Labor to absorb the Agency for Human Resources Development, HRD, is in line with President Barack Obama's Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, signed into law on July 22, 2014. WEOA is designed to strengthen and improve our nation's public workforce system and help Americans back to work, including youth and those with significant barriers to employment into high-quality jobs and career, and helps employers obtain skilled workers. Currently, the Department of Labor, HRD, is under the administrative supervision of Labor through an executive order. When I first entered government employment in 2004 to 2010 as the Director of Labor during the Camacho administration, the executive order combined the two agencies, and that's how I functioned and worked when I was there for six years. However, I just recently returned, and in returning to the Department of, in January of this year, the governor put HRD back with Labor again for me to return, to put the two agencies together to properly perform what was expected of us by the federal government. I fully support Bill 104-333, and I am very, very, very glad that Senator Blas sees the need to do it, and only because one needs to understand that the Guam Employment Service Office, which is GS, Catalina Cruz is the administrator, the GS is a division of the Guam Department of Labor, and it is the core program that pulls all these other programs together, other programs such as your HRD program, which is workforce development, or DVR, or public health, like the Urtanic program, because there are several federal funding given to Guam to develop and train our workforce. However, GS, as the Wagner-Paisers Act, is a sole entity that actually services business owners, employers, and job seekers. So, I fully support Bill 104-333.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Connolly. Ms. Munia?
Good evening again, Senators. Again, my name is Joanne Munia, and I am the Society of Human Resource Management Pacific Council State Director, and I'm also a past president of SHRM. Again, as I mentioned, SHRM is the largest professional organization in the U.S., 160 countries, and we have chapters in both Guam and NMI. I'm here today on behalf of the Society of Human Resources Management, the Guam Chapter, to support Bill 104-333. On July 22, 2014, President Barack Obama signed into law the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. This transforms the public workforce system by improving the links between diverse talents and the nation's employers. The law streamlines the coordination of employment and training services. It strengthens collaborations with the states and the local partners. Local partners meaning Society of Human Resources as the major. It also provides Americans with increased access to work-based learning, including job training. The key is streamlining. Early this year, the Society of Human Resources Guam Chapter reached out to the new director of the Department of Labor and the Agency for Human Resource Development to work towards strengthening our workforce for the island. We were happy to learn that although the department and agency were separated by an executive order, both are currently held by one director. This was not the case during the past few years. Having two different directors heading the Department of Labor and the Agency for Human Resource Development resulted in a very poor partnership with the Society of Human Resources Management and the Department of Labor. With the passage of Bill 104-333, we believe that SHRM can effectively work towards and work with the Department of Labor towards a single unified plan for achieving a strategic vision and goal for preparing our workforce and for meeting the skilled workforce needs of all our employers. Senators, the Society of Human Resource Management Guam Chapter supports this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Munia. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. So, we'll consider Bill 104-333 as having been publicly heard, and there being no other bills to be, thank you very much, no other questions. The Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micro-Nation Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capitol District hereby adjourns this public hearing. The time is 7:08 PM.